My phone went off.
I'll call the meeting for the Guthrie Planning Commission for Thursday, January 8th, 2015 to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogden?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
And Commissioner Coffin?
Yes.
We're all here.
Any public comments?
We do not have anyone signed up for public comments, but we do have two signed in for to kind of debrief if they decide to provide any opinion later on.
You want to wait and do it later then?
If they, we sign them in just in case they want to provide any commentary, but they're not here to talk about any specific topics tonight.
Okay. We'll catch them towards the end. How's that?
Works.
Approval of the minutes for September 11th, 2014. Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Chairman Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell? Sorry, I need to back up real quick. Are we, did I hear a motion in a second?
Actually, you were entertaining for a motion. I will make a motion that we approve minutes for September 11th, 2014.
And I will second that.
Okay. Chairman Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell?
If I was absent, I can't.
Abstain.
There you go.
Commissioner Ogden?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
And Commissioner Coffin?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, I have my notes.
All right. Approval for the minutes of October 9th, 2014. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 9th, 2014.
I second.
All right, let's put to a vote. Chairman Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogden?
Abstain.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
And Commissioner Coffin?
Abstain.
Abstain. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the minutes for December 11th, 2014.
Make a motion that you approved.
I will second that.
All right, and we'll take a vote. Chairman Powell?
Abstain.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogden?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Coffin?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six is discussion and possible action regarding outbuildings in residential design standards.
Well, just to kind of brief the commission on this, last Tuesday night, the Board of Adjustment approved an application for a all-metal structure to go into a neighborhood area 100 percent metal. They did make some comments back and forth. They, you know, were kind of torn on this issue. They thought it could be considered an improvement to the area, but didn't want the precedent to get out of hand. So they ended up approving the motion. Just kind of wanted to give you a update. I think Shelby has sent you, Shelby Lewis from the planning office, has sent you a email, kind of moving forward, the staff's intention is to present these types of things to the planning commission and get commentary. We're actually checking with our legal department. I mean, you guys were briefed from Randall Shaded last meeting regarding the rural water issue. We're trying to move forward with legal to see if you guys can actually provide approval for any outbuildings or accessory buildings to be made. So I'm going to be checking on that over the next month, but that's kind of why you're going to start getting some more emails from Shelby Lewis to just try and drive that conversation. I know that the Board of Adjustment was kind of wanting to know what your opinions were on one of the issues for their meeting last Tuesday night. So you'll start seeing these emails. If you just want to provide some commentary to me, I'll relay those messages on to the Board of Adjustments whenever they have anything to do with some type of planning scenarios.
Thank you, Cody. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mosley, what I, I think we discussed a little bit, and I happened to see that on TV, and that particular structure we're talking about is now, I believe, in the historical district, is it not? For that part. Tenth and Manser, is that? That's the one I was talking about besides the other?
That would not be in the historical district.
Okay, but again...
Floodplain, maybe.
Here, here, it's going to be something in a range of 20 by 40 to 20 by 50, all-metal building, not even a discussion of any wainscoting. I really would like to make sure that we hear a little bit about this, maybe ahead of Board of Adjustment, because maybe they haven't got into all of this that we have. That's beyond even our commercial guidelines of allowing that. So I really would appreciate the opportunity to have us be consulted in the future, maybe ahead of a Board of Adjustment if they're going to be asked first, or maybe we can kind of talk with them and let them know why we came up with those type of restrictions.
Absolutely. And in response to that, Commissioner Ogden, I'll just let you know, yesterday's email that you've seen, or I can't remember if she sent it out yesterday or today, sorry. The Board of Adjustment Commission hasn't actually seen it. The chairman and the commissioners that sat on that board, they have not seen that yet, because we will typically, and staff will continue on with what we've traditionally done in providing that agenda to them. I think we do it nine days out, as I think the goal that we set in-house. And so you guys have it well in advance of a month before their meeting, and so it just allows you guys time. I did set a deadline for when I'd like to see that commentary from you guys, so that I can accurately relay those comments, opinions, anything that you guys have that you want to be relayed to the Board of Adjustment. And we also, we also will look at a possibility to maybe host a dual kind of combination meeting, so that the planning commission can talk about why the guidelines were set in the first place. So obviously, two things that we're trying to accomplish right now are to provide you guys with as much information about what's going on, and we'll actually talk about that in the next discussion item as well, but provide as much information to you guys of what's going on, and then also make sure that our, all of our boards are adequately equipped to make the decisions, that, you know, kind of make, as much as we can, everyone happy.
The other thing we were going to maybe discuss about in this, item six, was the outbuildings residential having to do with some of these carport things that have come up, and we've, quite a few of us have got phone calls and things about it. And we've seen partial of our specifications and things in that. Looks like we really, I'd like to think that we should revisit this and perhaps suggest maybe a little, what do we call it, roundtables?
Workshop.
Workshops, and bring this up, because it's, my phone's been burning up a little bit, and I know a few of the other folks have too, so perhaps we could think about a workshop to address that. I don't know. Have you, either one, Joe, you guys got any comments on this? Because we've, I know you've had phone calls.
Right. I guess Cody could clarify this for us. Are carports considered accessory buildings?
They are. We've checked that a couple different times. I don't know that it's actually identified. A carport is identified in the IBC, the International Building Code, because what Chief Building Inspector Hanke, who's in the Community Development Office, what he identifies as a building is something kind of enclosed with at least three walls. It's kind of their rule of thumb for what a building is, but as far as what, it seems to be the example has been, carports have been included as an accessory building in the past, as far as past practice for the city.
And that's something, maybe, I'm sorry.
Well, but the consideration for the two new ones that we heard about on Broad, I guess they were not considered an accessory building by the city.
Right, and that's kind of where staff has been, obviously, working very, very diligently on this over the last few days. I think that we started hearing it Monday before the New Year, so the 29th of December. We've gone back and forth, and I understand Jim Hanke's perspective on it, because he sees it as three different walls. And so we're still trying to dive into those, but the past practice has been, up until recently, that those were being considered as accessory buildings.
In that case, because of that, do we need to just do some clarification or make an amendment to our ordinance for metal buildings as adding that to a structure, as instead of just a metal building, or actually any kind of carport metal structure, regardless of walls, as long as it's roofed or covered, both in our ordinance for no-metal buildings, actually, and for accessory buildings, to be both clarified in both areas or in both ordinance?
You know, I, we can always, I would always suggest that the board, if that's the recommendation that you'd like to do, maybe with a little bit more homework and possibly with a workshop that Commissioner Ogden is talking about, maybe we can kind of really firm up the current standing of, you know, this type of issue with metal buildings and everything like that. And then, so if you want to make that recommendation tonight, we absolutely can. I'm going to continue working with our legal counsel to talk about kind of where we stand on these accessory buildings. You know, is there a possibility that the planning commission itself can approve or deny a building? Because talking with one of the commissioners on this board yesterday, they said, you know, some stand out, but some kind of do blend in. And so do we tell, you know, is there just a kind of a blank rule of thumb that, you know, we rule by, or is it, you know, a case-by-case scenario that maybe you guys determine?
But according to the existing guidelines, no accessory building can be put in the front facade of a residence.
Right. I'll tell you the, I don't think that justification is the right word, but kind of where Jim Hanke saw was since the alley was not accessible, this was the closest way to resolve that solution. But we're, like I said, that's something that staff is working on entirely right now.
And I did, I actually, just for the commissioners that don't know about the particular one, I took a picture of the two that were, I guess, the new ones in town, and then I also just took a picture of some of the others, four or five of the other type of structures that they're talking about.
And do you want to talk about the difference between those?
Well, there are other structures in town that, the flat roof ones, which for the most part are, they're really in addition to the house. They're not separate from the house. They are, they're a part of the home, I guess. They're attached to the home. They aren't a freestanding, so in that sense, I don't think they would be an accessory building. Like, I have one across the street from me, the Wells home, Cody Wells, you know, that's attached to the house. It certainly doesn't have the visual impact that these do to a residential street.
Well, again, could we, could we get a little workshop set up here, so that we can address this? I really do think we need to address it, because there's some there that, you know, with all due respect, they just, they do not help the neighborhood. They do not help that home. And I can certainly see why some of the residents are concerned that this structure needs to be behind the building, or certainly behind the facade of the house, which at least we did address that much in our specifications, but I think we need to go a little further.
Yeah.
It seems like to me, if they are accessory buildings, if they would not be allowed as written, and that, you know, if they wanted to have one, then they'd certainly have the right to, you know, apply for a variance or come before the board, and that might, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but that might be the, that might be the route to go.
I think we should always leave the variance option open, you know, and it's facing something.
You don't want to just say no to say no.
No, I think we need to have the option of letting something, you know, there needs to be some rule or clarification in place, and I think a workshop is probably the best way to handle that.
Or even if we just added carport to the accessory building wording there, you know, so that there would, there wouldn't be any...
Clarify the...
Yeah, so that there wouldn't be any questions as to what they were, because as is, if they are an accessory building, then they're really the only structure that can go in a residential lot in the city of Guthrie that doesn't have to meet any design standards.
Well, then I don't think we want every one of them to have to come to us. That gets rather redundant and cumbersome, but that's why I think if we can set some clarification issues, that planning department can issue the permit, and I'm assuming that you all got to be permitted, and perhaps inspected for its foundations or something, that if it's clear for them, they can go ahead and write the permit. And if it's one that needs a variance, then maybe we can be asked to address it.
You know, one thing I do want to touch on, obviously, is what Commissioner Chappell just said. I think that what you guys have shown over the last week in talking about these, Commissioner Chappell just said, you know, we don't want to just say no just to say no. You guys have been very, very fair in how you've worked with the community, and staff has tried to be as well. And I'm very excited that we're actually working through these things in a positive way, because a lot of, we're seeing a lot of community engagement and seeing a lot of people wanting to take pride in their communities. So that's, that is a positive note. But I don't think that we have to necessarily take a motion on the workshop agenda, or on the workshop item. We can decide to, you as a board can decide to take no action for now, but staff will just kind of plan for a workshop to discuss this specific matter. Kind of, I shouldn't say this specific matter, I should probably say that that workshop, I would think, would cover two specific areas, carports in general, and then buildings exceeding 60 percent metal material. I think that just to make sure that we can get all of that all in one workshop, I think that that would be pretty positive.
And one thing I wanted to point out, and I don't know, I'm new to the commission, but I read the comprehensive plan, and of course, the comprehensive plan, and just to educate people a little bit about, you know, anyone at home that's watching, every city in the state of Oklahoma is required to have a comprehensive plan, and I know I may be preaching to the choir to some of you all, but they're set up so that cities can have codes and ordinances, and they're set up, not only did the former planning commission work on it, but the city council approved it, and cities have to pay to have a comprehensive plan. And one of the things that I found in the comprehensive plan that I think relates directly to this type of structure, and, you know, the comprehensive plan is sort of a vision for growth for the city of Guthrie and sort of drives everything that happens in our community. But one thing that really stuck out to me was that our city founders, oftentimes, there is a failure to conceive of a city as an ensemble of projects that relate to one another. And the original builders of Guthrie understood this, and they built a place with unique character. And as the, you know, the former capital of Oklahoma, and with a downtown that's very historic, but neighborhoods too, that are just as significantly historic, over and over again, I found in the Guthrie Plan, comprehensive plan, that there is a real effort to promote a vision that protects the historical and architectural integrity of our city. And anyway, I'm just glad that we have neighborhood associations that brought this to our attention, and, you know, we want what's best for Guthrie. We want, when people think, you know, I want to live in a charming, architecturally interesting city, people will want to live in Guthrie. And we've got to protect what we have, so.
Really, definitely. So let us know, sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Would you like us to make a motion, or?
I mean, as far as the date.
If you would like to, if you would like to direct staff to move forward with a workshop for this, I think that that would be appropriate.
Need a motion for that?
I would entertain a motion.
If you'd like to.
I'd like to make a motion to have staff do that as soon as possible, and I'm sure you can contact us and find a date that it would be usable for all five of us.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Before we second, before we second, there have been some other questions that have been brought up in the past in the community regarding, you know, chain-linked fences. I know that it's obvious by looking at the ordinances that there was a plan to sort of remove the possibility of people having chain-linked fences in their front yard, and I know that there's some council members that have expressed that concern. It would be nice to be able to maybe enter those design standards into the, into it as well, because I guess the understanding that we have now that chain-linked fences, and this is the way it's been explained to me, which is a bit confusing, but that if you have a home, and you want to put a chain-linked fence in your front yard, that you can, if you can see a chain-linked fence from your front yard, which puzzles me, to say the least. And I, and at one point, some people from the neighborhood were talking about the carports, you know, they said that they had been told, or they thought that perhaps, that if you could see one of these carports from your front yard, that you could have one in yours, which just means that essentially, it's just a matter of time before you to be able to get one. You just have to wait for the domino to come. And people aren't, you know, there may have been one chain-linked fence put up in front of a home in Guthrie in the past three years, okay? But it is something that, that I think we might ought to address as part of that design guideline, because it specifically mentions that you can't do it in Guthrie, but I think that it's been, oh, what's the word? It's been decided that that's for new residential construction and not the existing resi, that's the way it's been explained. I just, maybe we, it would be a good topic to discuss as well.
And I took Commissioner Ogden's motion to include kind of a workshop over the overall design guidelines, not necessarily building materials, but, you know, chain-linked, chain-linked would obviously.
Two new members, basically. I think that's a good idea.
Of course.
Sure, bring everybody up to date.
Two new members and a new staff member, really, realistically. I think that we can all address that.
We can all learn.
Yeah. So that's how I took Commissioner Ogden's motion for a workshop, and I think I heard a second from Commissioner Wood.
I didn't, did we have a second?
I made a second before Mr. Chappell.
Before I interrupted you.
No, that's fine.
Motion's been made. Second, can we have a vote, please?
Of course. Chairman Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogden?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Coffin?
Yes.
All righty. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven's discussion of current developments.
All right. So one of the marching orders from our last meeting was the planning commission just kind of wanted to be apprised of some different things that were going on. And this is kind of my effort to reach out and let the, let the commission know what's going on in town. So I don't want you guys to ever, you know, be approaching a coffee shop and not be able to, you know, answer someone who has a question of, oh, what's going on over there. So as far as what we, you know, the economic development realm kind of always has a little bit of non-disclosure agreements, and right now, we're not facing too much of that. So just kind of wanted to drop off a few ideas of what's going on. Recently, you guys have, the planning commission has seen me put before the possibility of an entrepreneur's zone. We've, and then someone asked at the end of last meeting if this was directed towards the 80 acres. This project specifically would introduce the first entrepreneur zoning to Guthrie, and it would be actually the first entrepreneur, the first zoning dedicated towards entrepreneurs in North America. Someone asked if it was dedicated towards the 80 acres. It's certainly a possibility. Of course, city council would need to provide some input, of course, and, you know, is it something that we want to see with the, I refer to it as the 80 acres, and maybe that doesn't sound real familiar to everyone. The city actually owns 80 acres north of College, east of I-35, and so it certainly is a possibility, but right now, we're just trying to introduce kind of this groundbreaking initiative before we really talk about where we're going to see it put in force. So we are, downtown is getting a lot of action right now, a lot of attention. A group that actually won the International Economic Development Council's Gold Award this past 2014 year for public-private partnerships is interested in coming in and doing some revitalization projects in Guthrie as well. So possibly some new construction in the downtown that would obviously be presented in front of the Historic Preservation Committee and Planning Commission, just to make sure that you guys know what's going on. It would, it would go hand in hand with all the other historic buildings. Historic preservation has a rule that you're not really supposed to replicate, you're not supposed to make it copy, but, you know, something that complements their, this group is someone who I'm very confident would lead a great charge in our downtown area. Downtown development, of course, last meeting, we heard from the city attorney, Randall Shaded, about the permit moratorium. If you have any more questions about that, basically, the city council put a moratorium on building permits outside of the 1972 city boundaries. Luckily, we have been able to kind of work around that. This is in response to the current litigation with Logan County Rural Water District Number One. We were able to see an agreement approved during city council on Tuesday night that will allow us to serve water to the Silent Harvest Phase Two, until Rural Water can do that. You know, the Silent Harvest Phase Two, it's a federally subsidized, federally taxed, federal tax credits are involved, and so they are on a deadline for when they have to have their completion of construction done. So we wanted to make sure that we could still continue to provide as best customer service, even if we are not going to be the water provider long-term. We wanted to make sure that they weren't in jeopardy of losing any of their tax credits or anything like that. So we're excited to, that that's going to be back up and running here soon. They, I think that they actually paid for their permits yesterday, and so they're very eager to get going again. Things that, as far as city planning, we're looking at, looking at receiving or applying for a grant from Department of Transit, the State Department of Transportation. They have a donating bridge program, something like this, something that would provide ease of access, not by motor vehicle, but it's just kind of an adopted bridge that is no longer in use, maybe alternative transportation safe, like bicycle or pedestrian safety to use. You know, is there a possibility that something like, something like this can be done and dropped into the elbow, the piece of land just a little bit west of downtown? Maybe see that revitalized again. That's, you know, just something, it's not a plan necessarily, but something that staff is really looking into, is kind of a community development initiative, trying to provide those parks, public spaces, and quality-of-life type atmosphere projects and that moving forward. That's really it. We're working with a hotel who is looking to, I think that they have recently broke ground, actually, in town. They, that should be up there, again, outside of those 1972 city boundaries. And so they are currently working with Rural Water District Number One again. And that's kind of where we're at. Are there any questions that you have? Have you heard any rumors or anything like that that you like?
Oh, yeah. I have a question, because I've received about 30 phone calls about the armory.
Okay.
And I'd like to get some clarification on that. Wouldn't that have to be rezoned by us in order in a residential neighborhood?
That would.
It's the neighbors that are calling me about it.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure, I don't know if you all have received anything, but I heard it was going to be a city maintenance building, and then I heard an oilfield company was going to rent it, and, you know, it's all up in there. It's, you know, rumors fly.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I kind of dropped the ball in bringing that to your attention for tonight's meeting. That was actually scheduled for a public hearing tonight to talk about a rezoning for, from the planning commission to go into an industrial. Now, I want to, I want to be very clear, this city, when the city uses something that it's, that it owns, the city itself is actually exempt from any zoning.
Right.
And truth be told, any city-owned property would be exempt, as long as the city did own it. Now, we were trying to be very, very transparent to the community in telling them, hey, we own the building, but we're not going to be the ones operating out of it, because yes, there was someone interested in using it as office space. We had addressed some concerns with them. They had some solutions to resolve noise, and there, you know, there was an agreement on the table to where they weren't going to be operating during certain hours, and, you know, unless of an emergency or something like that. But they were able to provide different solutions for many problems that you might expect from a office, office use. It would have been a heavier office use, obviously. There were possibilities for some type of construction and some type of noise. I'll be honest with you on that. They were prepared to resolve those with viable solutions. Unfortunately, they have since backed out. They, they're no longer interested in the armory site on Logan. I think the address is 724 East Logan. They're no longer interested in that as an opportunity, so the city will continue operating it. We use it for storage of some materials. We use it for storage of, of some materials. We have an agreement with Neighborhood Solutions to use parts of the building for storage. I know that our public safety officials, they, they operate out of there for training and those kinds of things. So, but that's kind of what we see on the table right now. We're getting calls about it every week. The, the interesting thing about that is I, I got a phone call and someone was interested, is there no other space in town? It's not that there's no other space, but you know, as far as warehouse space, that's a, that's a pretty unique thing that we have in the armory. The, the ability to use that and operate a warehouse kind of style facility out of that, that's not what, you know, people are tripping over, I guess, in town. There's not a whole lot of extra warehouse space to operate a business like that in town. So that's why they were interested in the army, armory. And since then, they have decided that they're no longer interested.
Okay. Well, I just want to clarify it.
That, yeah, like I said, that meeting was scheduled for tonight. I think that we, we sent out, I think, 57 letters. And we just got a phone call a few days after that saying that they were no longer interested. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Cody, when you're in?
Um, you know, I want to touch a little bit on the comprehensive plan that Commissioner Chapel mentioned earlier. You know, when, whenever the community development department specifically looks at the comprehensive plan, we use that as, you know, a reference guide. You know, that's kind of how we, if we ever make a staff recommendation to the mayor and the city council, we, we often look at the comprehensive plan to say, does this fit? And if it doesn't, we, you know, we kind of try and share that with the, with the community. As of, you know, in December, we talked about senior living projects that were, that were interested in, back, back in '02, when the comprehensive plan was, the last comprehensive plan was done. The, the city council at the time issued kind of a statement saying that they wanted to focus on senior living. And so we wanted to let city council know how we've accomplished, how we've moved forward with that goal and how we would continue moving forward with that goal if, if given the directive. So we, we look at the comprehensive plan a lot and I, it's something that I'm becoming more and more familiar with. And like I said, anytime that we do as staff make a recommendation to city council specifically, we, we always look to that as kind of how does this fit in with comprehensive plan, along with the strategic goals of the council for that fiscal year as well.
Okay. Thank you. Would that cover item eight?
Yep.
Staff comments?
That works.
Okay. Item nine is board comments. Mr. Chapel?
I know, it's hard to believe.
Ogden? You already spoke too long anyway.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Wood?
I think that the, we've discussed tonight everything that needed to be said, setting up a workshop, I think is going to be really good to, to address some of the things that I'm hearing from people in the town on different metal structures and carports, just in general, what's going on. I think that pretty well handles everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coffin?
Great.
You're good.
Welcome aboard.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, there were.
Oh, excuse me.
We have, I think we've got someone who's turning in on public comment real quick.
Okay. Ma'am, could you come up to the podium and give us your name, please?
No, I'm full of ten out of this pocket.
Are you paying her to talk?
My name is Sue Ducharme, and I was really pleased tonight to hear how this commission talked about carports and metal buildings, especially large metal buildings. Because so often what actually happens with those buildings is they turn into a backyard business. And when they're that large and have more than one garage door, it's usually a mechanic. I actually have pictures that were taken today of a, a new building that I never heard about. We just happened to drive past it. And there it sat with a full-blown business ongoing in the backyard of a fairly nice home in a very nice neighborhood. And I wondered if you would like to have the pictures of that particular property and see that? Because that is what can happen. I know these metal buildings, at least right now, are not necessarily under this commission, but I hope that they are. I think that anything that goes into a neighborhood, into a residential neighborhood, that this planning commission would have the opportunity to make that decision. I did have a short conversation today with Cody and about any recourse we might have. And am I correct? It goes to district court? It doesn't go before city council? Decisions that the other, that the other commission made on this building?
The appeal for the board of adjustment, should the applicant have not liked the, the ruling that the board of adjustment issued, would go on to a higher level court.
But are we talking about the one that she has already discovered or did this get bootlegged in or what do we know?
This is.
Because I just found it.
Actually, guys, we can look at the pictures, but I don't think we can discuss this until you throw it on the agenda for next round.
That's correct.
I don't want to, I don't want to get us in trouble. So, and nothing against you, ma'am, but it.
No, I got.
We can throw this back on the agenda for next round. I'd be more than happy to have Cody do that.
I just wanted to use it as an example of how these things happen. I don't know if that particular building there went up before the adjustment board. Would, would you know?
Not to my knowledge, it hasn't.
Okay. So that means it's just going straight out of permits and someone saying, okay, you can build that?
Don't even know that probably, but maybe that can be investigated.
I can take a look. I can take a look. Chief, Chief Building Inspector Hankey can provide me some insight tomorrow and I can reach out to you tomorrow.
Yeah. I just took a short drive over on the Cottonwood side. As you guys know, I'm with Neighborhood Solutions. We organize those neighborhood associations. That's a struggling neighborhood, but it was less than struggling when we began a couple of years ago. It was just apathetic. But we have people over there that have put a bunch of volunteers together. They have rehabilitated probably 10 homes using volunteers and donated material. And, and I really would hate for them to believe that no matter what they do towards revitalization, it's just a lost cause. So I'm hoping that every commissioner on every board thinks about this as how it would impact the, well, the value of their own home should one of these buildings or some ugly carport that's boarded up, because that's eventually what happens, people board up one side, if that were right next door to your own home. And I know you folks are very conscientious. I don't, I don't show up at your meetings very often. Usually it's about a mobile home. But really and truly, I, first of all, kudos to you folks for keeping an eye on our community. But just so you know, if you've got 22 calls, I got 100 from every neighbor in and around this town regarding carports. And we certainly had several, not about the metal building that's been discussed this evening, but about the metal building that I found a picture of a half hour before we actually got here tonight. So, thank you just for hearing me out. I appreciate it very much.
We appreciate you coming down tonight. We'd be more than happy to, you know, put something on the agenda. If you'd like Cody to do that, we could do that, where we could discuss it with you.
What are chances of someone from Neighborhood Solutions attending your workshop? Would you like to have some kind of feedback?
That would be a question Cody would have to answer.
I believe a workshop would have to be open to the public. And so.
Sure.
That would be nice.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sir, do you have something?
No.
Nope? Okay. Oh, Mayor?
Mayor.
Mayor, you don't have anything. Mayor, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion again to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Mayor, a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.